Ah, it's pretty self-explanatory, Mr. Calhoun.
Well, it's not miss self-explanatory. It sounds like the reading of the paperwork says that it's a veto of, I mean, I assume this is just the most recent proposal that was included?
Yes, the intent was just to veto that particular ordinance. There was, and Ms. Blaylock, tell me if I'm incorrect here, the original ordinance that established a pay raise for P MPD lieutenants and below still stands because it was not.
No, the veto.
That's one of the previous.
One at a time, one at a time.
Hold on. So, so it's the mayor's understanding that, did the council rescind that, that first, the primary ordinance?
They amended it to read as follows, the way it is set out, because this one in essence replaces the previous one.
Okay, so, so the mayor's veto is not to veto pay raises for lieutenants and below.
Yes, sir.
The mayor's issue with this particular ordinance, and so I'm just explaining the mayor's intent before we get to the function of what needs to happen. The mayor's intent was there was not a discussion with the mayor, with the CFO, myself, or the chief of staff on presenting a raise for captains and majors. So, if we're going to do something along those lines, especially something that will have a, it needs to be evaluated and have some analysis by our CFO, we would like to be in the conversation before it goes to the council for vote. So, the mayor's intent is not to veto or rescind those raises. The intent was the addition that was added in the ordinance of majors and captains to that group of individuals who receive raises, because that was what they agreed upon remedy was when we talked about recruitment retention of MPD. And so, it appears that council, Councilman Pruitt brought it from the floor, had a vote, and that's why we're in this space, that everybody is confused because the mayor assumed that he would, that what was the original ordinance had not been amended. We thought this was an additional ordinance, and that's the way it was written, at least from me. It didn't say it rescinded the other ordinance and replaced it.
Can I, can I jump in this thing?
Can I jump in right quick?
You can make us get my thought.
No, I'm not trying to do that. Hey, now, this is my understanding, Ms. Blaylock. We passing ordinance for fifteen, five, and five, for lieutenants and below, five percent for majors and above, and a five percent for all, COLA for all other employees. We passed that nine oh. That went in and that ordinance was signed, and I think we'll right now have that into the budget.
Right.
This came up because it was taken off the agenda and we brought a new ordinance saying we would include majors and captains in this ordinance. So, my thinking all around that it was a very new ordinance, just trying to do the increase.
Gentlemen, if you'll read the first sentence, that ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four be amended to read as follows.
Okay, nineteen twenty-four, and this is twenty twenty-four.
That's the one that was presented originally. So, this supersedes what was in there previously. If you want to go back to what the mayor had presented, you're gonna have to do another ordinance, just like the previous one, and the council will got that.
Okay, so what we're looking at now, if we, let me go back to you, if we go ahead and override this veto.
Yes, sir.
And are this, we override or we don't, or we uphold this veto, that means no one gets a raise throughout this entire city.
That's right.
And that was not the intent in the beginning.
From what he's saying.
And that was not the intent from this council, that we discussed with the leadership and everybody about what we was gonna do.
But that's what you accomplished with this ordinance.
And I know, and I think that was just a mistake where we jumped on this without thinking it all the way through. Now, we have this before us, and the public think it's something that we're trying to pull the raises away from MPD. We looked at something that we looked from a budget standpoint with our CFO. We discussed it, myself, Mr. Pruitt, and the leadership. We came up with something that we can agree on, because it eventually started at a twenty-five percent increase that was thrown out there, and we came back and then we passed this, and this was not my intent, and I voted no one in the beginning to rob the city and any other MP employee, city employees on this. And just to do it in this method, I think, you know, I'll roll the dice that no one gets a raise tonight and throughout the city budget, because I don't think this the way we should do budget. I think this is probably.
Mr. Calhoun, excuse me for interrupting, okay?
I might lose my thought.
Well, I'm older than you, let me assure you, okay? Regardless, in the budget that has been worked on for the last month, okay, the original ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, I believe it is, and the discussions that were held with me was that an incentive pay amount of fifteen percent would go to your new officers, sworn officers, all the way up through the rank of lieutenant. And from captains and above, it would be a five percent incentive pay amount. Then, on top of that, recommended by me, and I'll be the first admitted, to the mayor, that all other employees would get a five percent cost of living adjustment, okay? That is what is going to be in the budget that's being presented by the mayor two weeks from today.
Okay.
That's what we've worked on day and night.
I got a quick question, though. I thought when we had passed this initially, that we were looking at quarter four being when the five percent for city employees and fifteen percent for lieutenants on down and five percent for captains and majors was supposed to go in. So, are they getting paid off of that increase that we made back in, what was that, May? So, we're not getting, we're not paying anybody on that, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again, I'm not.
We passed the initial ordinance back at the end of May, I think it was.
In the end of May?
Wasn't it? The fifteen and five was about end of May?
I'm not sure the date on it, but I know as soon, we were already two weeks behind trying to get a budget established.
Right, but my question was, I thought with the intent of those being in effect for quarter four of this year, so I'm just asking.
It could not. We didn't have time to make it effective for quarter four. It was stated in this room that it would be effective October one upon the time that the budget, you know, was passed by the city council. So, no, sir, it wouldn't, couldn't happen in quarter four.
Okay, Mr. Pruitt?
I don't even know what I want to say now.
Man, your mind not that short.
No.
Make the point.
Well, and so here's the other thing.
Hold on, Mr. Reed, Mr. Pruitt, go ahead.
Yeah, let me share this, Mr. Reed. We did have discussions. We had two public safety meetings where Betty brought some numbers for fifteen percent, twenty percent, and twenty-five percent. And again, I want to remind this council, we would not be in this position if a congratulations letter went out from our previous chief about how they were receiving twenty-five percent raise and go into the city county personnel board before this council knew anything about it. We wouldn't even be talking about this problem. So, there has been discussions, and the only thing that I'm saying is we're not reinventing the wheel. We're talking about eighteen people. We're gonna add to this. Number-wise, it's gonna be probably less than two hundred thousand dollars. I don't know the FICA and all that good stuff, but at thirteen employees, Betty, making ninety thousand dollars, that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And then fifty thousand if the majors are making a hundred, ballpark, and that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. You throw in insurance and all that other good stuff, it's probably around two hundred thousand dollars.
And Mr. Protam, if I remember correctly, when we had the meeting to talk about that, we looked at the twenty-five that the previous police chief had proposed, said that wasn't doable, twenty. We did say that fifteen was doable across the board in the February or March meeting that we had for that public safety, so.
And we talked, I was, I was in those meetings as well, and we did talk about that.
Yeah.
We talked about if we had to get twenty-five, doing it over a three-year period, if possible. But we didn't have all of our numbers in. Insurance has gone up, a cost to the city. It costs the city much more than it does the employees, who are gonna be paying an additional five dollars per pay period, and some even less than that if they're on a high deductible plan. So, there are other factors that we know now that we did not have during the committee meetings, the public safety committee meetings. And when the budget officer and I looked at the numbers and worked everything out, we brought the funded positions from four ninety down to four hundred, and putting in the merit increases and the incentive pays a fifteen percent, as already described, for your SPs from one up through four, I believe it is, and then five percent for those above that. It was almost a wash to the dollar amount based on the revenue, and we're looking at what revenue we will have to be able to, you know, sustain this budget.
Right.
Can I, Mr. President, Ms. Bevel?
Yes, ma'am.
I know last year, and we had four hundred and ninety-five police officers budgeted for, four ninety.
Four ninety.
Four ninety, okay, four ninety. And this is for this new budget, so we, and we're, I believe we budgeted.
Four hundred.
Four hundred this year.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're about a hundred, almost a hundred less, so.
Ninety positions.
Yes, ma'am, ninety positions left. I mean, and I know we don't have that many right now.
That is to help fund the increased pay rate, increase in health insurance. And I'm trying to think, Medicare doesn't change, and most of them don't have that. I mean, the FICA portion of it, but the retirement portion, yes, they do.
Explain this. So, the money that's in that budgeting for the police department right now hadn't been spent because we don't have that many police officers. Is that correct?
Are you talking about the current year budget?
Yes, ma'am.
It's considered fallout.
Yes, ma'am.
That will help take care of whatever expenditures we may have in the budget that we did not have budgeted for.
Okay.
Okay? Or it goes into fund balance. That's how we were able to get our fund balance from forty-one million dollars up to sixty-three, so that we would be not necessarily in compliance, but the bond rates had recommended that we get at least twenty percent of our general fund budget in the reserve.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I just know that, like I said, I've got those papers.
Take it to your mic.
I have the papers, like, for the one that you did for fifteen percent, the twenty percent, and then what jumped over the head for twenty-five percent, and I know that you stated we couldn't do the twenty-five. Twenty would be a push.
There was no way.
Twenty would be a push, and then the fifteen percent, we felt like we could manage that with less amount of.
At the time, not knowing the other factors of what increased cost we would have.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, thank you. That's just, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
And there's a conversation about, we talked about it. Yes, we talked about it, but there was no consensus. So, just because we talked about it in a committee, we talked about a lot of things in committee meetings that don't get to this, to this council or this board. So, just because the council had a conversation about it does not mean that it had the support of the administration. So.
Mr. Reed, I don't mean this with any due respect, but, I mean, I don't have to ask permission to put something on the adjutant. I mean, it is what it is.
Okay, so, okay, you're exactly right, and duly noted, and duly noted, and it duly noted. And it, and it's the mayor's prerogative to sign contracts for construction projects on his time also.
Are you threatening to carry it?
No, there's no threat. I'm just saying.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, 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 Mr. Calhoun.
No, no, there's no threat.
We're looking up the contracts. By law, we're supposed to approve contracts.
That's not a threat. What I'm saying is, is.
You said it, I'm gonna handle it.
No, no, the conversation is this. You're saying what, what we have to ask permission for and what you don't have to ask permission for.
Y'all ain't signed that thing in five years.
All right, animal discussion on item number one.
I don't know what you're talking about, but what I'm saying is.
So, Mr. Calhoun, excuse me, gentlemen.
One at a time, one at a time.
That's cool.
Ladies first, okay? Thank you. Are there any other questions, gentlemen, ladies, that I can answer for you at this time?
Yeah, I got another question, and I wanna offer another amendment or another ordinance at the time of the theme, because if we gonna just do this haphazardly, you know, I wanna make some friends, too. I wanna do a fifteen percent across the board for all public safety. So, we'll vote on that at the five o'clock meeting.
Okay, we're gonna have to draw up a document, Mr. Chair.
I mean, what I got in front of me is what I voted on, and you and I, Betty, agreed that six and a half million is what it's gonna cost next year for this. I don't really understand the argument. This is what we voted on?
No, that's not what we voted on. Oh, that's what you voted on, you're right. I didn't vote for this. I voted for the fifteen, five, and five, that we all voted on, nine oh, that we voted on. That's what we voted on as a council, nine zero, because that's what we discussed and that what we agreed on. I did not vote on this. This was a five-four vote that I did not go along with because it was haphazardly. It was politics that came in. We agreed that we was gonna do lieutenants and below. Lieutenants and below, not captains and majors.
We.
I did not.
You don't say "we" like we got.
No, no, we, hey, I have a problem. I understand. It won, five-four, but it got vetoed, so if you can override the veto at a five-four or six-three, it don't matter. C.C. Calhoun is not supporting it, because this is not what I agreed to, and this is not what we agreed to at council. Hey, we can go to item number two. It's not an argument. We can move on to item number two. We're letting.
I do. I know you wanna move on, Councilman, but I do want a point of interest here. As it reads, is this saying that the five percent COLA will also be added to those raises? Because the way it reads, if we're gonna get to the, to the conversation, the way it reads, it says all city employees, so that would include those individuals who got a fifteen percent raise also. So, essentially, they, if.
No, no, all others.
Except, except city employees.
Okay, it says all others. Okay, I just wanted to point a clear question.
And right now, no one has a raise. So, that fifteen percent that been put into the budget is just really null and void, because this rescinded that. And if we uphold the veto, no one gets a raise. If we override the veto, then we go fifteen, five, and five. I just don't believe in doing that type politics and that propaganda to mean we drop something and we move on with that. So, I'm gonna vote unconsciously, and I ask the council to do the same. Item number two.
Very good, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the conversation.
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning property containing eight point seven acres more or less located on the west side of Lower Tumka Road, across from Stokes Road from an R fifty district to an M three key district.
Okay, Grady Hicks is the owner of this. I've been in conversation. I'm familiar with the property. What it was, they've planned and proved this, but they put a Q on it, and he don't want the Q on it, because this property's been junkyards for years before anybody had zoning, and he has a junkyard that he has across the road. He's leased. He was supposed to be here and got tied up with something. And he's, as you can look at the map, the aerial map, he's got cars over there now, and so all he's asking is to take the Q off of it. Plan is okayed it, and he just wants the Q removed.
I did not receive an appeal from him.
I don't think he knew he needed to send one in.
Okay.
Well, we just carried this item over, but I gotta call him that, too, that, you know, is out there. Lower Tumka Road is all a junkyard, and why the planning commission put a Q on it, I don't have a understanding.
Yeah, 'cause it's been, it's been a junkyard before in the past, before anybody really concerned, so he just wants the Q removed. So, does he need to file a appeal?
I think he has a specific timeframe in which to file the appeal. Mr. Adams, am I right?
I don't know.
I believe so, yes. I'd like to point out that the applicant agreed to the Q at the, at the meeting when the rezoning was granted, so this is.
He's right there, Mr. Adams. He's coming in the door. I think, I think he thought he had to. His engineer said, why don't you get that off of there? He was advised to ask it off. I mean, I don't think he really understood what the Q meant at the time, so.
It's within the purview.
It's within the purview of the council to change it, because these are only recommendations to the council.
Okay, okay. So, we can do it tonight.
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Item three, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning property containing five point acres more or less located on the south side of East Fleming Road, one thousand feet east of South Court Street from an N one and flood hazard zone to an M one district.
That's outside the city limits, I think.
Anyone speak on item number three?
It's Calhoun.
No, it's in the P. No, the planning commission. No, this is South Court Street, East Fleming, so it's not outside.
District five.
Yeah, that's me. Anyone from the planning commission want to speak on item number three? Hey, I don't have a problem with it. We can move on. This is my, let's go. Item four? Yeah, I'm good. Never mind, we good.
Item four, ordinance authorizing payments of seventy-five hundred per month for twelve months to the sheriff's office for patrolling and law enforcement.
Mr. Calhoun, being so close to budget, we'll pull this off, and we'll talk about it in the budget process, if that's okay with you guys.
It's cool with me, Mr. Pruitt.
I was asking the administration.
Man, let's go, man. Item number five.
Finances, also requesting that item number five be carried over again. They have not received any word from the owners of this property.
All right.
Item number six, review of Key West Inn, ten forty, southwest of Boulevard.
What you doing? Anybody, what you gonna do? What's the deal? Is that the one that burned?
We'll talk about it in regular sessions.
They'll talk about it in the work session, so we understand what you're talking about.
Well, what it is, is this hotel is next to, is on the boulevard. They're having a lot of issues. They're having problems with ladies of the night and activities that's going on at that hotel and the area right there where it is. It's next to a business, and the businesses can't get their business in line because of the hotel continuing to have people in and out doing illegal activities at that hotel.
Okay, so you're doing a review?
Yeah, I was hoping it was gonna be in. They, you know, they were supposed to come in today, so I don't want to carry it over if I don't have to, because, I mean, it's not, it's not doing a good job over there, and we're trying to revive our area, and this is a problem that's over in the area that's not helping revive the area.
But you asking for a review. You're not asking for a vote.
Well, I want a review, but they are not here. Did we?
They might be here in the regular meeting.
If you're planning on carrying it further, you need to discuss it in the council meeting, so there's a record in the minutes.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do that.
Item number seven, resolution repealing the legislation which created Montgomery City County Personnel Board and expressing council's intent to adopt an ordinance creating the city personnel board in accordance with Act twenty twenty-four dash three three seven.
Okay, council, anyone want to discuss item number seven?
Is this the one that you're presenting, council? I'm sorry, I just jumped in. I was trying to see if.
No, no, no.
If Ms. Water, is Ms. Water here?
Well, this is my intent with item number seven before we discuss it. I plan on carrying this over for two weeks. I have some information. The council has been asking for some additional information as we move forward, so I wanted to just do this and set a meeting, a working council meeting for the council. I bring it up in the work session, but I just wanna just say my intent.
Yes, sir.
So, we can bring all parties involved. We'll discuss this, because I think the county is going forward with what their plans are. I know there's a savings as far as a city standpoint. There's some misinformation that's being transferred out there throughout this council meeting. I want to get all the facts on the table from all parties involved, and then we'll make a decision on this in the next two meetings, and I'll address that in the regular council meeting. Any other comment?
I don't think I have a comment following that. I just wanted to express, because you said a lot of it, that we just need to have a discussion on it, because what I found is by going through the different departments and maybe some of them servicing my district and asking a question, there has been a pause in hiring or an issue in hiring due to them working off of two-year-old, three-year-old registers that are being kept at personnel departments. So, I'm really interested in what the discussion is that we haven't had already, because it's been, this is the second time it's been carried over, and no one has mentioned anything or asked any questions. But everybody, we've been having this whole grassroots campaign on why it shouldn't be, but I don't think the education piece is out there on why it should be and/or why it shouldn't be. There's no pieces behind it. It's just a no or a yes, and there is, I don't, I don't see what a discussion is. And I know the counselor, I know Counselor Calhoun, you asked for it last council meeting, and we still haven't had a discussion, and it's constantly being delayed. And if you say that it's a problem with our departments and we're not hiring, well, we're still delaying the process. Right now, doing what we're doing now is still delaying the process, and this council does it time and time again. We delay something and delay something, and nobody know why we delaying it, because ain't nobody saying that. Then suddenly, here come a grassroots campaign, so somebody talking to somebody, but it ain't amongst the council. And it is really tiring.
But, Mr. President and Counselor Johnson, I mean, two eighty-seven, it says right in here, and one of the things that I have not seen yet unless I've missed it is to provide for separate personnel appeals boards for each separate personnel merit system, to provide for the transfer of existing employees to the appropriate system, to provide for the adoption of rules and procedures for each system. So, I think part of the issue is, is that seeing what that structure is going to be is essentially, and I know, Mr. Reed, we talked about some HR stuff, but, I mean, it says in the act that.
So, so to that point, and I actually have a talking paper upstairs that I was trying to get printed so I could give to you all. You're exactly right. So, what we have done is we have put out on the street and actually have made a selection. We've done an RFQ-RFP to have a contractor consultant come in and evaluate what a personnel merit system for the city of Montgomery would look like, and then they would also help us transition from the city county personnel board to an HR merit system in which was full service. No disrespect to the Montgomery Personnel, the Montgomery City County Personnel Board, but essentially, they do a portion of what we call traditional human resources. I talked to Mr. Calhoun about this this weekend, and I have to say this. I, the job I left in the United States Air Force, I was the chief of human resources for the Air Mobility Command, eighty-five thousand employees. I was the chief HRO. What we do is not full service. There's no lifecycle management. There's no talent management. There's no educational training program. There is, essentially, if we want to do personnel policy, the board stands as in an advisory stance, but they don't create the said policy. When I first got here, when we talked about telework, I had to work with Stacy Bellinger to write a telework policy and a telework agreement with employees. The personnel board doesn't do that work.
Mr. Reed.
Yes, sir.
How quick would you get that survey done?
As soon as we get this resolved, I can go ahead, because it's in the budget for that consultant to come in and do that work.
So, they would do that after we pass this or?
Yes, sir.
You couldn't have it done before?
The whole reason is for them to come in and, and help us stand up a merit system. If I do that, spend taxpayer dollars, and then we make a decision not to go away from the personnel board, well, I've just wasted four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in city money.
Well, Mr. Reed, I do think that one of the things that we have to do as part of this act that was passed is to create a personnel appeals board as part of.
And that's what this team would do.
Well, and so I guess my point is, is that in order, we have to see, for us to, you know, because we're getting contacted by all sorts of people, some people that work for the city that have concerns, wanting to see what that looks like. I think it's a good idea. We, I, I think it's a good idea that we added the HR department. It's ridiculous that we don't have HR specialists helping people with their benefits, retirement, all that type of stuff. I agree with that. But this component of it i- is one that I think is important to the merit-based employees that we have. And we just want to see what that's going to look like before we go ahead and move forward. Because if there's a gap in time from when we pass this to when that, those, that new board is stood up, what do we do in that interim, right? And then I think that's the thing that I'd like to see is, is at least some semblance of what the rules package is going to be, what this board is going to look like and the adoption procedure for that as well.
Right. So, so essentially what, and not to, to take too much time on this. Essentially what that consultant would do is just that, fill in all the gaps as we are transitioning and ensuring that there, those particular functions are still, uh, happening. Uh, how that, uh, review board is structured, they will do all of that with input from the council, from the administration on how to go forward with that. But the more time we do this, the less time they're going to have to be able to, to, to transition. That's, that's the point.
And, and I want to add too, counselors, that it stated, in this Act, Act 2024-337 provision, which we all have a copy of, it states that we have to approve the repeal of the statute creating it. We're creating the Montgomery City Council Personnel Board. Counselor Calhoun, and we saw that the county commission has already done it. So say we hold this up, because this has to be done because this is effective January 1st, 2025, no matter what we say. Because that was done at the state level, right?
No, no, it has to be. It was an amendment put on that it had to be passed by the city council.
Yeah, okay. And that says it needs to be established by the department by December 1st, 2024. Okay. So long as we carry this and don't do, so we have to go with the steps and the processes and this is a part of it. And we have until December 1st to do this. I'm just com, so y'all want all the work done prior to us voting on anything is what I'm asking. That's what I'm just trying to understand.
I, I don't, I don't understand. We've spent a bunch of money. I don't know why we just don't go ahead and get to study and we have all the facts in front of us. Spend the 450. If we think it's going to be a savings, spend it and let's, let's move on down the road. We'll have all the facts when we vote on it.
Well, I sent the numbers out to each council member on what the savings would cost, what we're paying now. The 80% of the cost that we're paying, uh, from a city county personnel board, I sent that out on Saturday, everybody. I know it's the weekend, but I did send that e, that email out to let you know what the savings and costs would be as we go forward. I know, you know, the emails and the campaign that's been out there, you know, it's, it's misinformation. But we try to get the facts to the nine people that sit up here that has to vote on these items. So, you know, we get these emails talking about vote no because the mayor is going to take over the personnel board. That's not necessarily true. This board will be appointed, appointed by the Montgomery City Council to approve this personnel issue. So, you know, we get these campaigns, I sent the facts out, what the savings would be, the finance, the merit provided that to us. And so what we do in the two weeks interim, we'll discuss that, bring all players to the table, we'll discuss it when we come before in two weeks and we vote this up and down and we're going to keep moving. All I want to do is get the facts in front of us and we make the best decision that we possibly can for the betterment of the city. And I understand things have been around for years and years. People are not adapting to change. Change is not something that you just run into. But when we're trying to do things that make Montgomery a better place for our employees, this is what we have to do and it's not going to make everybody happy. But we got to do the right thing from the nine-member board of the governing city of Montgomery. Thank you. Any other discussions on item number seven?
Well, I mean, I just want to point out again that when this thing passed, it had certain stipulations. So what it's replacing is important to our decision-making process. So being able to see what that's going to look like, on behalf of the city employees as well, to be able to see what that's going to look like. You know, we assume it's going to be a, uh, city council-appointed personnel board, but that doesn't say it has to be right now. And I don't know if we've had the guarantee that it's going to be a city council-appointed personnel board. But we know that it has to be a personnel board of some kind and I'd like to see what the rules and parameters for that.
We would set that as the council, uh, the board, we would set that as the council.
That's it, that's it.
That's in our purview.
Yeah, that's, that's in the, that's in the statute that just passed.
That's what we would do.
All right. We good. We gonna move forward. We gonna carry this over for two weeks.
Item eight, ordinance requiring all departments and real properties in the city of Montgomery to have and maintain a local property manager, a local property management company for the oversight and maintenance of properties.
Mr. Smith?
Um, no, I've just got this on the agenda. I want to start the conversation, um, about this. We're looking at some of the issues that we're having with apartments. I've had some good feedback from the public. Also, the planning department and some others want to get some feedback. I'm thinking, I don't know if I have to wait until a regular council session, uh, to put this into an ad hoc committee and get a couple of the counselors and some of the departments telling me, Stacy, and, because I want to make sure that this is not a punishment to people that are doing good work in our city. Um, and whether that is capping it and saying, we're not going to impose this on people that have eight units or less, four units or less. Whether it, you know, what the true definitions are. This is supposed to start the conversation, um, about a problem that has been talked about a lot at this council and in my time I've seen, uh, firsthand and, and we're struggling through. So do I have to wait till regular council to, okay, well during regular council, I'll ad hoc it.
Okay. Hey, Mr., Mr., I know you, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but I have one question. Where would the enforcement? What were the enforcement laws on if I'm on?
Yes. So we were just, we had the Commerce and Industry, it came up briefly, but that's kind of what we're trying to figure out here is, is how it gets reported, right? How, is it added to the license reapplication process where you have to note who your property manager would be, what the potential penalties would be, who would be in charge of enforcing it? I think it's an, you know, this doesn't have to be a rushed thing, right? We've been dealing with this problem for long enough. But it was time for it to stop being a conversation that I have sidebar with some folks and start bringing in the departments and actually getting, um, some legislation on the books that help us, uh, enforce this. Because, you know, I was, we got some folks from the YMCA here. I was on that brown bag bus. I've been to some of these apartment complexes and, uh, it is frustrating for me when we call these places and there is nobody local to respond to when it's 110 degrees outside, no air conditioning, raw sewage leaking. Like, we're not talking about the apartment complexes that are owned by some of the great developers and property management companies we have in this city. We're talking about these outside investors that are just putting people through the wringer. That's got to stop.
All right, Mr. President.
Mr. Mitch?
And, and I guess that's, that's, that's my biggest issue we have to figure out. Uh, we did an ordinance that, uh, required, um, those landlords to notify the city when they sell, buy or trade property. And I think that has, has not worked. I don't know whether it fell between the cracks yet. Um, but I think we put that ordinance in place maybe a year ago. Um, and it's, it's so difficult to, um, I don't know what it'd look like us getting some enforcement for revenue department. But it has to be something that, um, somebody's able to keep up with that database on, on whatever we're trying to put in place.
Yeah, we had that discussion at the meeting last Monday and I think we're working on the enforcement part. With post-certify, uh, post, a post-certify, uh, people to work into our licensing and revenue to be, I heard somebody ask.
Yeah. Mr. President, the only problem, unless we have something recorded at the county or on, that, that when somebody does a title search, the other out-of-state agency that's buying it, unless there's something there that triggers something, we're going to really struggle to stay on top of that. You know, if we had, if we attached liens where they didn't act properly and for back sales tax and all that, then they would contact us, get that lien paid for. We need to start leaning them.
All right. Thank you. Item nine?
Ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate property owned by the city at 900 Rosa L. Parks Avenue.
All right. Anybody have a question on item number nine?
No.
Item 10?
Ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate owned by the city at 904 Rosa L. Parks Avenue.
Item 11?
Ordinance authorizing the purchase and sale agreement and purchase of real estate by the city of Montgomery at 64 Monroe Street.
Okay. Anybody have a question on item 11?
Is this right back here behind us, right to the side of us over here?
Right on the corner, right there.
The old Will building?
Yes, sir. All right.
Item 12, ordinance granting a license to construct, install and maintain licensed plate readers located on the city right of way at North Decatur Street, at North Ripley Street, westbound, and North Decatur Street, and House Street, northbound.
I, I got a question. Um, Patrick, is Patrick here? Who, who's going to pay for these cameras? Because I, so Thursday, uh, I see you out there sharing. We having a, I don't know if you got this update or not, but we having a town hall and the reason of the town hall is for FLOC. FLOC has fluctuated their prices and I only get 20,000, each council member gets 20,000 per district to go towards cameras. And out of our district and District Three, we can't afford it because they went up. They started out with 2,000, then it went to 2,500. Now it's $3,000 for cameras. And you talking, and I know y'all just jumping on board because at first y'all didn't want them. And I know y'all coming on board and I want y'all to have something, but I want us to have options. And I want FLOC to explain it to not just you all, but the entire district on why they're going up on prices. And they don't have an account manager. So I got a lot of issues with FLOC and how they run their business. So I would love for y'all to just come Thursday, let's go through that and then we'll bring this back up in two weeks. Thank you, ma'am. That's it. Thank you.
Hey, Marsha, what time Thursday?
9:30.
Here?
Mm-hmm, in City Hall Auditorium. And they, and they, they did want, um, council members to come through, but you know, if we get four, we get, Brenda got to put it out to the public. But if y'all want to rotate, because they'll be here all day for like a while. So if y'all want to rotate in and out, but 9:30 they'll be here for the first presentation.
Okay.
Item 13, resolution authorizing agreement with Aldott for the zoning and resurfacing of Erie Hill Road from Harrison Road to Atlanta Highway.
Hold on, did Patrick answer the question?
He, well, she was like, okay, so it was okay.
Well, why you call it Patrick?
Because I was going to ask him who paying for it.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hold on, Patrick. Hold on, Patrick. So we on number 13?
Yes.
Mr. President, I got a question. Patrick, so is this just doing the initial engineering? Patrick on?
We've already identified all the parcels that need to be purchased in this agreement. What it does is, uh, sets up the funding agreement between the city and the count, uh, the city and the state to start the right-of-way acquisition process. There, there's actually already an agreement in place. This actually amends that existing agreement and, and that there's some additional monies being added to the agreement that will reduce the amount of match money that the city actually has to put toward the project. It will reduce it from, I think, initially in the original agreement was like 580,000 and this will reduce that to about 184,000. So, um, and this, this doesn't obligate us anything. It just sets us up to move forward should we want, want to continue forward with it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Ready for 14?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution setting hours of operation for 2,600 North Belt Drive, Montgomery International Dragway.
Mr. President.
Ms. Beer.
Um, this is just about changing some hours of operation for, um, the drag strip. And I've also been given some information today that we need to look into, I need to look into with business licensing and that kind of thing before we move further on this, um, item. So I want to carry it over, please.
All right. Item 15?
Resolution authorizing feasibility study of Lovelace School.
All right. Any question on item 15?
Do we own Lovelace School?
No, the school board owns it and I think the city is trying, you want to talk on this, Mr. Reed?
The school board went to value across.
Item 15?
On, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to it a little bit. Uh, I think Mr. Tate could probably give a little bit more insight to this one. But essentially we are, um, and that's 14, right? Just so I have an.
15.
15.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
We're doing the work for, for the school board.
Yeah, for the school system. On item 15, the Lovelace project that we talked about was the school. Yep. Chuck, Mr. Bird?
Mike, I don't know if you, there, there we go. This is merely to do a, what we call a facility condition assessment of the existing building and its systems that make that building operate or determine what's inoperable and determine, um, what the feasibility of it would to put that building back in service. Uh, we have the architect who, uh, has made a proposal to do that. He's here. He can talk more specifically if he need additional information. But it's merely to do that type of condition assessment to see how feasible it would be to put that building back in service.
Why are we doing it?
Why are we doing this?
It's a, it's a, it's school board property, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
How do we get in the middle of it?
I'm sorry, Mr.
How do we get in the middle of, of doing this?
Well, that's why I said before the council, because we couldn't go forward without your consent to do the work there.
And, and my, my question with Mr. Tate, uh, with the school board, if we're going to do the feasibility study, is the school board willing to turn that property over with the city once we figure out what's at work? Now, if they can't pay for it, it's just sitting there. So if we can get a deal that.
If it's not our property though, how do we do anything until they agree to do it?
Agree to do it.
They should pay for it.
They should pay for it. If they want it done.
I'm surprised.
Why are we using our money? They pay for it.
They can't afford it.
Yes, they can't.
Are we on the, are we still?
Mr. President, can I say something?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Tate, you, you know that what I do for a living and, and the value of that building is determined how much this cost is. So if we go and say this cost is 200,000, then the value goes up. We say it's 2 million and the value goes down. So we really don't know what it is, do we? We have no clue.
And, Mr. Grimes, you know I know exactly what you do for a living and I can appreciate what you do for a living. And in our world, this is what we do. Matter of fact, we did the same thing for the community centers to determine how we got to the ones that we renovated. We, we, we actually went in and looked at the systems, the building, the condition of it. And then based on a index, we determined if it was feasible to do any work in there. There were 28, 23 community centers, only five of them passed the test and that's what we invested in. We don't know enough about the school today, Lovelace School today, to even make any kind of recommendation to the council about how to move forward until we spend a, a few dollars to understand what that building is.
Did, did the B, the Board of Education ever do this type of study by any chance?
I'm not certain of what they've done at, at any of their properties. But I do want to mention to you this so that we do understand this in a little bit larger context. That's a historical school, uh, with a lot of, uh, history that the building and the people that went through that building, um, contributed to the city. One, uh, at one point it was a very functional school. The history of it is, is still something I think that needs to be at least understood. And, and we need to do what we can from our side of the fence to, uh, maintain that history in the building. Now, how the relationship works between us and the school board, uh, that can be worked out later. But this is a minimum effort to at least get to some degree of understanding of that building.
Mr. President?
And Mr. Reed or Mr. Tate, I don't know, but didn't we have an agreement in place related to paving school properties? And that once that was completed, that abandoned school properties would become property of the city of Montgomery? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, we, you, you are correct. However, I don't believe Lovelace is in that group.
Okay.
Lovelace was not in there. But, but I will say now, uh, some of them are doing the same thing for other school buildings that we are doing, our proposal with Lovelace at a much higher rate than what we would be spending here. And I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Mr. President? Mr. Kippy?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So the way I'm reading my paper here, Valiant Cross, Valiant Cross wants to go and occupy that building.
Well, if it turns out that it's feasible, then that may be.
And they'll purchase that building from? MPS.
We're, we're merely here to assess the building. That's what this is about. The, the conditions of any agreement beyond this assessment is beyond what we're asking for here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr.
I will add this though. Um, I know we're, we're talking value across and, and the search. But, uh, when we talk about spending these dollars, do, does it affect the public good? As it stands, we have an abandoned building that is not doing anything right now. So, uh, part of this is maybe kind of what you call priming the pump. You put a little water in there and then you get a lot of water out from a developmental perspective, from a community developmental perspective, uh, and for that area. So, uh, I think that's the mindset of the administration is just that is we are assisting, yes, probably, probably, um, and some would say maybe overreaching. But more importantly, there's a community development piece here that goes along with that. Because as it stands, we talk about blighted buildings. We talk about, um, we talk about how do we get rid of blight? And we've often said in this room, we're going to have to develop our way out of blight versus demo our way out of blight. And if we had to go in there and demo that building, it would, that cost would be way more than us doing a feasibility study and understanding, uh, what, what the possibility of that building could be.
Well, it'd be great if there was an opportunity, Mr. President, for us to, if this study was showing that this building structurally sound as a revenue opportunity for us too. Why can't we just own it from the school board, renovate it ourselves and lease it out to Valiant Cross or whatever charter school is interested in being there?
I'll take the lead from District Seven. It's in District Seven.
Yeah.
Thank you. 32,000. Let's go. All right. Item 16. Thank you, Mr. Tate.
16, application for towing company doing businesses, D and D Towing and Recovery, 562 Oliver Road. 562 Oliver Road.
All right.
Um, Mr. President, I drove by there today. I really can't find it. I don't know where it's located. I went by there this morning.
And you can't find?
I couldn't find it. I drove all the way back in the back and all that kind of stuff. I just need Mr. Rose to kind of explain to me where it is, on property, if he's here.
Okay, we'll talk to him at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seventeen, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Texaco Food Mart, 758 Airbase Boulevard.
Ms. Riley.
Um, I'm okay with it. They're gonna transfer that license, but I do want them to get some security out there, so I'll talk to them about that.
Thank you, ma'am. Item eighteen.
Application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Lyons Pride at 7701 Mobile Highway, Hope Hole, Alabama. All parties have approved this one.
All right. Any questions? No, nineteen.
Application for rental beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Lyons Pride, 1111 Perry Hill Road.
All right, we'll have public hearing at that time.
Towing application for retail beer.
Go ahead, Bob, you got something?
Yes, with respect to the Lyons Pride, 1111 Perry Hill Road, one of our examiners went out there and has advised that there is no current license under the new owner, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Wahih Guru. They also need a food permit, and we've been advised the previous owner of sales taxes on them.
Okay.
So we would like to carry it over.
All right, sound like a winner.
Thank you.
Item nineteen. All right, ma'am clerk, item twenty.
Application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Macklemore Food Mart, 2111 Macklemore Drive.
All right, Mr. Grimes.
I don't have a problem with this. We already, this is change in ownership.
All right, thank you.
Twenty-one, application for lounge retail liquor class-two package license, doing business as Macklemore Spirits, 2115 Macklemore Drive.
Same thing, I don't have a problem with this.
All right.
Twenty-two, application for special retail more-than-thirty-days liquor license, doing business as the ultimate place on 3541 McGee Road.
Okay, I don't have any, I thought we would have made the regular meeting.
Twenty-three's resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on beer slides.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Blaylock.
Yes, sir.
And our work session roster for public communication, a budget review from the Montgomery Community Action, Dr. Benjamin Jones. Budget review, Central Alabama Agent Consortium, Susan Surgress. Did they get the memo?
I sent letters to all of them, yes, sir.
Budget review, Alabama Shakespeare Festival, Todd Schmidt.
He was here earlier. He came up and spoke to you.
Yeah, he did. All right, next item.
Keep going.
Budget review, I mean, I think number four is kind of mute budget review for Central YMCA, AJ Hernandez, president. Okay, yeah, this is the offset for the city employee.
So I have a couple documents we can bring up to you guys, just to really help me understand what it was, right, in the budget. And so initially, the budget was basically the city paying, subsidizing memberships for employees. So as you guys will see in the documents, there was 300 employees as well as 160 retirees that were subsidized, and it has been going on for a number of years, and so to the tune of roughly $165,000. And so it's been a great partnership. The employees have all expressed their enjoyment, as well as the facility usage has been there. What I would like to consider is potentially expanding that, you know, that's obviously for city employees, adults. I would like for the council, Mr. President, and the rest of you all to consider what we could do for youth and teens. So as Councilman Sedgman has mentioned, the brown bag bus earlier, there's a lot of impact needs there, you know, from neighborhoods that we're not currently reaching that would be in many of you all's districts, that I believe through city support, we'd be able to serve more of those neighborhoods, as well as our teen achievers programs. So I would like the council to consider that, to expand that budget for the YMCA, to be able to serve more in our community and better.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Hernandez?
No, thank you so much for what you all do.
He learn quick. He know how to get a request in in two weeks.
He sure did, did.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Schmidt just came in with Alabama Shakespeare.
Where is he? Mr. Schmidt?
Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock.
We're into the restroom. Hi, thank you. I'm Todd Schmidt, the executive director of Alabama Shakespeare Festival. It's my pleasure to present today before the city council. Thank you for the partnership, the longstanding partnership we've had with the city of Montgomery. Just some updates on what's happening. We're ending our season right now with Joseph and the Amazing Tentacolor Dreamcoat, which runs through Sunday. It's wonderful and a fun show. Hope you get a chance to see it if you haven't. 20,000 students from all over the state attend our school fest performances. 75,000 people attend our other adult performances. We have 200 performances throughout the year. Our ongoing relationship with Alabama State University, developing the next-generation of African-American theater artists. We held summer camps for local youth, which we just finished. Everyone who applied for our summer camps was applied with financial assistance. Our Fall Festival of Shakespeare is another one of our great educational programs, where we go into three Montgomery Public High Schools for an extended residency, where we develop a Shakespeare play with the students, provide them with technical support and obviously direction, and then they come to the theater and perform those in the fall all on one day. It's a big hit, the kids have a great time, and those performances are packed and full of energy. Our Young Southern Writers Project is an enjoyment with our longstanding Southern Writers Project, which is the professional end of it. We bring in 10 students who are joined by professional playwrights in a week-long workshop. We use local children in our school shows when appropriate. Midsummer Night's Dream this year, A Christmas Carol, and as I said, Joseph, currently running. Joseph has a youth chorus of 14 local young people. Our budget is currently 8.6 million. We provide more than 1,000 local jobs in a year and a $20 million economic impact to the city of Montgomery. We certainly, I believe, contribute to the city's positive reputation and perception throughout the country as one of the premier Shakespeare festivals around and the largest and only professional theater in the state of Alabama. We certainly, and we also serve as a recruiting tool for executives and businesses coming to and viewing Montgomery for a potential place to live and work. And I believe we continue to enhance the quality of life for all citizens of Montgomery as we do throughout our programming, both educational and on the main stage.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Any question for Mr. Schmidt?
None. Thank you so much for all your.
Thank you, Congress, sir.
Uh, Mr. President, I know that Community Action has not showed up, but I want to put them back on there, Ms. Blaylock, and they can bring along with them if they have some updated bylaws, because I don't think that we've seen any new ones for their operations. And Stacy, if I'm inclined, Stacy, 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 if I'm inclined to ask, if an organization that we're funding is currently going through an audit by a state agency, can we request the proceedings of that audit?
I don't know if they would consider them public records, but I can reach out. Is it the Examiner of Public Accounts?
Yes, for Community Action.
I can reach out to them and ask.
Yeah, and council, the new council members, the reason why I do this, just so we can get update from the organizations, because we don't really have FaceTime with them, but for instance like this, where we have an organization that's supposed to be for the community, and I know my community, rather than probably a couple of other districts, they need the services that are provided through an agency like Community Action, but after the third of the month, there is nothing left every month, and I find it questionable. And for me, I think it's a question that we need to ask if we still should fund an organization like that, especially if they're under audit, and look at our board appointments to that type of organization, to see what our board appointments are saying, communicate with them, and find out what they're doing at their level for the operations that are happening in an agency like that, because they should be for the good of the public, and it's not serving that right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget review for Family Sunshine Center, Tay Knight. Executive Eric.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilwoman Calhoun. As you said, I'm Tay Knight, the executive director at the Family Sunshine Center in Montgomery. I want to thank you all for continuously supporting us through a budget allocation each year. I'll tell you, we use those funds to meet our match requirements, which allows us to generate more federal revenue for the clients that we are serving. To remind you, we are helping family violence, domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking survivors in our services there at the Sunshine Center. We do that through crisis response and intervention, safe housing, counseling advocacy, and other types of supportive services. An average over the last three years of services for victims, an average of about 1,200 crisis calls a year for residents in Montgomery County. We track by county, not necessarily down to the city level, so the numbers that I'm giving you are for Montgomery County as a whole. So about 1,200 crisis calls a year, over 120 adults, that includes women and men, who seek services for those crimes, over 100 children each year, about 8,500 nights of shelter provided. We generally have about 200 adult clients and 200 child clients that are going through our counseling programs, and legal advocacy, which we added a few years ago, about 1,400 hours of legal advocacy provided by our own staff attorney for those survivors. And we also have an apartment complex here in Montgomery that we own and operate, and am proud to say it's a beautiful campus, and I hope it'll stay that way. But that is those, that is housing that's provided for survivors as they transition out of shelter. And so we were able to allow them to live there rent-free, and they cover the cost of their utilities and food and other items. So let me talk to you just a minute about the shelter that is provided. In the, when clients are in shelter, we are really providing for their basic needs, that is food, clothing, a safe place to lay their head, and really decide what's next for them. We can provide uniforms for school and work, transportation, whether that's to school or to a job or to a job interview, both adult and child individual and group counseling, of course, case management and legal advocacy, childcare services for when moms need to work with their case manager or job interview or something like that, life skills training, including parenting skills. We also have a medical clinic that we partner with the UAB Medical Residency Program one day a week, and then helping applying for housing, school, and jobs. And then finally, we have a follow-up counselor who stays with survivors for a year after they leave our programs to make sure that they are able to continue to get the services that they really truly need to be successful and find that violence-free life that they so, so much need. So I know that we've asked for the same amount of funding this year as we typically do. We would be grateful to have, have that funding.
Mr. President, I got one question.
Mr. Grimes.
Do you see the victim, number of victims going up, plateaued, or what?
Uh, we do. When I gave you those kind of average over the last three years, crisis calls from 2020 to 2023, 854, 1314, 1347. Women in shelter, 99, 114, 119. Children is about the same. The number of nights spent in shelter is really the one that maybe tells the true story. 4,135, 4,398, 8,497.
So just about double.
Yes, which means that the trauma and the needs are deeper than what they may have been in the past. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right, it is now 3:10. We will take a 20-minute recess, and we will start the council meeting at 3:30.